I'd like to call to order the September 4th, 2018, regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Here.
Mims?
Here.
Solie?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Throgmorton?
Here. Item two, proclamations. We have one proclamation to read for tonight about Constitution Week. So let me read that. Whereas September 17, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September the 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and whereas the Constitution has been amended from time to time to define basic rights, to extend those rights to all persons, and to modify other specific aspects in light of contemporary concerns, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Now therefore, I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of the City of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23rd, 2018, to be Constitution Week in Iowa City, and reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. I think there's someone here to accept this proclamation. Kathy Peasley, right?
Peasley.
Peasley, hi, thank you. And when you finish, or before, you can come up and I'll give it to you. So Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor Throgmorton, for this proclamation. As Regent of Pilgrim Chapter, I am proud to continue the 120 years of service that we have given to Iowa City. This proclamation is thanks to 1955 National Society Daughters of the American Revolution petitioning Congress for this resolution, and it was officially declared Constitution Week in 2002 by President George W. Bush. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Kathy. Before we move to the next item, I want to welcome all of you to your city hall, especially those of you who might be new to city hall. It's a real pleasure to have you appear. And with luck, we're not going to get a whole lot more rain over the next several days, but we'll see. Okay, item three, so that would, no, this would be, I'm still confused, Kelly, about the numbering of this, you know, the consent calendar is not...
Three through eight.
Items three through eight. This is a consent calendar. Could I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented or amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Solie?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Item nine, community comment. This is for items not on the formal meeting agenda, so if anyone would like to address us on any topic that does not appear on the formal meeting agenda, please step forward, state your name, take not more than five minutes, please, to say whatever's on your mind. Hi Nancy, how are you?
Hi, I'm here. I would like to talk about the Emerald Ash Bore problem a little bit more. The neighborhood that I live in, College Green, we probably have 90% of our properties are rentals. A lot of them are new rentals. When they apply for a license for the rental, they are supposed to have two trees. They put two trees in the triplex that was built a number of years ago at the end of Evans Street. What they did is the one, they were condos, so they were separately owned. So the one condo, what they did is they went and got two trees about this big around, planted them this far apart, so that they could get their certificate for occupancy. The next year, the trees were dead, and they were taken out, and they were never replaced. I have watched all the rental units around my place that are new. When something happens to the tree, the tornado took some out, a straight wind line, or a straight line wind took some out, whenever one of them disappears, they are never replaced. So not only are we now, not only am I now dealing with the fact that the ash trees along the street are going to go away, there are no trees in any of the yards, because although it says that rental properties are supposed to have trees, that is not enforced. If the city is not going to enforce that, I would really like some special attention to the College Green area. Without any trees, our neighborhood is going to look like a slum. The trees are the only type of landscaping that most landlords put in. Once those are gone, there is nothing there. What has helped is the street trees. At least there is some green in front of the house. When the ash trees go away, and they are going away very quickly in my neighborhood, the 900 block of Market was not clear cut, but it was pretty close, and I have watched the ash trees decline in the other blocks on Market, they're starting to decline on Jefferson. When they go away, there's going to be no greenery in our area to make it look like a neighborhood. There are a few of us that are still neighbors, who are still trying to hold together a neighborhood. It becomes more and more difficult, because the city doesn't help us to try and keep up our neighborhood. So I wish that you would look at ours, and maybe other neighborhoods, that have problems like this, and have special attention to them with the ash tree, and it would be great if the Housing Department would enforce their two trees per yard for each rental unit that they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. If the rest of the council agrees, I think it'd be good to have staff look into that and let us know what's being done, and whether we can actually take care of the problem that Nancy identifies. Sure. Thank you. Hi Davy.
Hey, how you guys doing?
All right.
I want to, my name's Dave Moore, and I live at 425 Davenport Street, and I want to thank Parks and Rec and the city for putting on that preservation, I mean, that presentation, and also for you councilors for going down the road towards treatment, at least some kind of road. It's got to have a lot of kinks be worked out. It's so darn complex, and I'm looking forward to not having my mind filled with thoughts about Emerald Ash Bore a month from now, but I've been reading a lot about it in the last month, and passing on information, and I got interested because I found out that my own particular neighborhood was going to look pretty raggedy pretty shortly. And then I began to look around town, and I began to realize that it wasn't just my neighborhood, and I was a little bit stunned, but, and I wasn't going to even go online and look into it. When I did go online, it took about 15 minutes for me to figure out that all sorts of people are doing it really differently. So I'm really glad that Iowa City's thinking about going down this road, and I hope you can work out the ambiguities about the marginal trees. You know, there's a lot of work to do there. I just wanted to point out a few things that came up in the presentation. I hope I don't go more than five minutes, and just feel free to cut me off if I do, Mayor, but there was also an awfully long presentation by Parks and Rec. The figure of ash trees as not being that significant to Iowa City because of maple trees being 19.9% of our trees. I think you ought to look at, see if you can get access to the tree inventory, and see if the ash trees are the majority tree on city rideaways. I think you'll find that they are, and that when it comes to city rideaways and streetscapes, it's not a minority tree by any means, it's just a majority tree. So that would be one suggestion. As far as EAB, or Emerald Ash Bore, being just one of many problems out there for trees, I think anybody, if you just Google "EAB" and trees, and you'll see what the first 20 pages come up with, or just Google infestation in trees, and you'll see that, you know, this ash tree thing's a big deal. There may be some things coming down the pipe, but they're not of this category, so I really appreciate you guys getting your head around this thing that is very complex. And let me see, what else? These are just scrawled things, and I actually thought that I wasn't going to say anything if you went down this road, but then I, you know, because I'm so pleased that you have. And I'm also so pleased that I think that Parks and Recs and city management is willing to go down this road, too. But I just thought I'd throw in a few things, just to sort of explore some nuances and get them on the record. Many, many cities are not just doing this to kick the can down the road until they get around to slowing them down. They're doing this to let the trees live out their lives, and a lot of research shows that that's exactly what happens. Someone along the line, it might have been you, Susan, I don't know, somebody mentioned the tree in front, you can treat a few select trees, like the tree in front of city hall. Well, that's a great idea, except what are you going to tell Paglias? You know, they've got three beautiful trees in front of Paglias, and I vote Paglias. You know, I go to Paglias more often than city hall. But as far as whether or not Paglias cut the mustard in the gray area or not, I'd say you need to broaden the gray area out, slow down on the gray area until you figure it out and come to some kind of consensus. And I would, because we could have done so much better by our trees had we gone down this road four years ago, I think we need to lean towards a stay of execution on those trees, because they could have had a shot at it four years ago. Let's see, what else? That city council meeting from October 21st in 2014, I know some of you were there, I would really urge anybody who has not read that text to take a real close read on that city council meeting. I might have shared that with one or two of you. If not, I'd be happy to share pages nine through 20. And I think that you'll find that not only is this not a situation that we have to revisit every five years, indeed, this is actually a conversation that has never taken place. And it's a tough conversation, but I'm glad you're ready to go down that road, you know, of looking what the best road is. I'm open for, I'm all ears, you know, because I've had my own agenda, and I'm just, I want to be open to a conversation, and I hope you kind of, at some point, open it to the public, too, if possible.
Got to come to your final stanza there, Dave.
Huh?
You got to come to your final stanza.
My final stanza?
Yeah.
Okay, well, as Connie Champion used to say when I would come here, "Where's your My final stanza is that I think the tree inventory needs to come out a little sooner than the first of the year, and I think it's really important that communities and neighborhoods get to see the tree inventory. For example, the Glenway Ridge Way neighborhood has lines of trees, Glendale Road and Ridge Way coming back has lines of green ash trees throughout that neighborhood. The city rideaway is very narrow, so the trees are in their front yards on their private space, and I believe that most of the people in that neighborhood think they are their private trees, and I don't think they are. I think they're on an easement, and it would be to their advantage, just for transparency, as, and as property owners, to know if those trees are theirs or not. And with a click of the mouse on that tree inventory, I think they can find out. So anyway, you guys, I really appreciate what you've done tonight, and same with Parks and Recs, same with management, and I look forward to seeing what you do in the future.
Right. Thank you, Davy. Anyone else? Good evening, Wally.
Hi, Wally Plotnick, 430 North Gilbert. I'll make it short and give Dave some of my time. First of all, I want to thank Parks and Rec and the folks, the experts who spoke as well. Incredibly informative and educational presentation, and for developing a very logical and cost-effective plan to deal with this problem, and this, I'm also on the Emerald Ash Bore. Neighborhoods aren't very logical, though. Jim, I was really glad that your first response was, hey, we got to do what we can, and response from other councilors as well, particularly Susan, strategic, one on a block. You hate to see the tree go, but it doesn't ruin the block. What Dave was talking about, there are streets lined with ash, it's the canopy, and to take them out, even, or let them go until they die and then take them out, the effects on the neighborhood is pretty catastrophic. So thank you for coming up with some other options, for considering, and strongly considering treatment for the trees. Also, John, thank you for bringing up the idea that individual homeowners can pay for treatment. It costs $1,200 to take a tree down, and a treatment is now effective for three years. I worked out the cost for a tree so big as $400. I can afford $1,200 over a decade to keep some trees alive in my area until something can be done, the disease can be, or it can be treated better, or at that point, bring the tree down and plant again, but 10 more years for other things to grow. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Wally. Good evening, Regina.
Regina Bailey, I live in Goose Town. We have a lot of maples in my neighborhood, including in front of my house. I want to thank you for taking trees seriously. Apparently, a lot of us do. Thank you for doing the same. It's in alignment with your strategic goals, fostering healthy neighborhoods, your environmental sustainability, walkability, and I think it's really important. I also want to point out to you that for many of us, we don't make it to a park every day, and we have great parks throughout the community, and that's really important. But most of us enjoy that green space between the concrete of the sidewalk and the asphalt of the street. That's the thing that we see every day. That's the thing that makes a difference. That's the way I choose where I'm going to walk, ride my bike, or even where I'm going to drive. Nancy mentioned the 900 block of Market Street, and I don't drive that way anymore, and I don't ride my bike that way, and I won't walk there in the summer because it's clear cut. It really is. And so, removal and replace, well, I'm not going to see a tree canopy on that block in my lifetime again. And these things make a difference to our community, and these things make a difference in our neighborhoods. So thank you, but go farther. Be more aggressive. Get out ahead. Julia's right, there are other things coming with climate change, there are always going to be other things coming. Let's be aggressive about lining our streets, lining our public areas with trees. It's a sound environmental approach to cooling and the heat sink that concrete causes, so be aggressive. I encourage you to, I like the Grand Rapids budget for their Forest Street Department. Push it farther in the budget considerations. Let's put more resources into tree planting, and more resources into staff, so we can get out ahead of this game. As you review the tree inventory, I grew up in a neighborhood that doesn't have rideaways large enough for street trees, and it's not very walkable. It's on the southeast side of Iowa City. So as you review that tree inventory, let's be aggressive about looking to those neighborhoods that don't have a canopy, that were never planned to have a canopy. That's just not right, and it's just not fair, and they're not sharing in the same opportunities that some of us have in our neighborhood. I would also encourage you to communicate and have more transparency about the policies. I looked, when I talked with Dave, when I talked to some other people, I looked on the website to see, what is our policy? How are we approaching it? I watched a pretty daunting YouTube video from 2016, which was very scary. It was about removing all the ash trees, so we really need to do a better job of communicating with our residents. I'm looking forward to the Tree Advisory Group, I think that will help. I think that there are opportunities, as John mentioned, to engage citizens, something like the Adopt a Drain Program. We still have that, right? Maybe we need to be more, invite more engagement around our green resources, and ask residents to be involved, because obviously, we've got a lot of people out here who are true tree huggers, and so let's engage them. So thank you, keep it going, look at the marginal trees, be more aggressive, and when it comes to budget time, we'll be back here advocating for a bigger budget for our trees. Thanks.
Good deal. Thank you, Regina. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll move to item 10A. This is part of Planning and Zoning Matters. Item 10A is a zoning code amendment related to required retail storefronts in the riverfront crossings district. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask Danielle to speak. Good evening, again.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. Danielle Sessman, NDS. This is a request for a change to the zoning code to allow for residential uses on the ground floor of certain areas of the riverfront crossings where it's currently prohibited. Just a little background for you, before we adopted the Form-based Code, we had a master plan, Riverfront Crossings Master Plan, and it did identify areas throughout the district as key areas for nodes for ground floor retail. The discussion in the master plan was allowing some flexibility for those spaces while they were encouraged to be retail, to kind of organically transform from possibly a residential use to retail over time. With the implementation of the Form-Based Code, those areas that were previously identified became more formally regulated. There was established in those same areas on the regulating plan line that indicated where the retail storefront would always be required. There was less flexibility in that regulating plan than the master plan itself. There is a requirement in the riverfront crossings throughout the district for affordable housing, so affordable housing is an encouraged component of the development of the riverfront crossings. There is, in this particular instance, a development that's occurring along the South Dubuque Street corridor, where several properties are currently being redeveloped and reserving space for affordable housing units, and then eventually transferring some of those units to another property at 628 South Dubuque Street for the Delray Ridge Project. And that project is not envisioned, or does not desire to have ground floor retail, but is in one of those areas on the regulating plan that indicates it should be reserved for a certain amount of ground floor retail. You should be familiar with the Delray Ridge Project. The city council recently voted to contribute city funds to that project. It will eventually include 33 units of apartment housing, 29 of which will be affordable. It has also been awarded LIHTC funds by the state. So the proposed amendment is to amend that regulating plan, not the designation of where the districts would need to have, or where in the districts there would need to be retail, but to create some additional flexibility when it comes to areas that may also be developed for affordable housing. The specific district where those properties on South Dubuque Street are located is the Central Crossing Sub-District, and as I said, the Delray Ridge Project is a LIHTC project and does have a certain number of units that are rent and income restricted. So staff has worked through a proposal to allow some additional flexibility in that sub-district. It would allow for the market flexibility that we think that the master plan envisioned in the first place. It's limited only to the Central Crossings District, which is the pink area, the light pink area on the regulating plan. The code change that we're proposing still preserves key commercial corridors elsewhere in other sub-districts, and a node in the, along the Park Sub-District, it would also have no effect in some districts where there are none of those areas indicated for retail, a reservation for retail itself. And we feel that the code change we're proposing aligns with the master plan, as I said. Fairly simple code change language, it's simply to add that text in red, so where in the sub-district code it would read, the residential uses are not allowed in those retail storefronts, there would be an exception for the, only the Central Crossing Sub-District for housing subsidized by a federal state program that requires at least 60% of the units to be rent and income restricted. So the Planning Commission did review this code change and is recommending adoption of it.
Are there questions for Danielle?
Did you evaluate at all any potential businesses that would fit with the affordable housing complexes that could work on the first floor, because, you know, first floor retail is a huge need in the community, and I wondered whether there could have been some business opportunities that would have been tailored, like a corner grocery or something like that that would have worked well to provide? What was explored in terms of alternatives?
The developer of that project is here tonight, so they can speak to what their desires are for that property, but our understanding is they're not interested in reserving room in that building for anything except affordable housing units, which is what they've indicated to us. I think there've been some earlier discussions about office use, perhaps, that maybe would support that operation, but at this point, we're not aware of any retail that would be desired by them.
Okay.
For clarification, especially for the public's benefit, would this permitting residential use on the first floor of this building be permanent, or could it be converted to commercial or office use at some point in the future?
Well, with the flexibility in the Form-Based Code, it could certainly become another use over time. The reservation that we make for retail currently, though, is a different floor plate, a different floor height, a taller height ceiling for retail uses, so this would not be built with that. So it may lessen the desirability of the space for future retail, because it would not be kind of structurally set up to accommodate higher ceilings where some of those facilities would be located. The zoning code, however, would not necessarily prohibit that kind of transition later.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Danielle? Thank you. Would anybody like to address this topic? Oh, Mary Ann, you would?
Where do I stick this? Sorry. I'm Mary Ann Dennis. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Fellowship. We're the developer of Delray Ridge. So with the LIHTC projects, the investor that we sell the credits to gets the tax credit, income tax credit every year for 10 years. They're required to stay in the deal for 15. The units are required to be affordable for 30. At year 15, the LIHTC rules say that a qualified nonprofit has the right of first refusal to buy those units. And so that means, and we're a qualified nonprofit. That's really the reason that we do the LIHTC projects as a nonprofit, because we're looking forward to year 15 where we can acquire those units. We can acquire for $1 and pay off any debt. So we fully plan to acquire those units at year 15. They must remain affordable for another 15, but it's the intent of the Housing Fellowship to ensure and manage those units as affordable units for the life of the property.
And if we don't amend the code, how many affordable units you could build there? I know now it's 29, right? It will be less, right?
No. Well, if we're required to build, I think that we would have to return the credits, truthfully, because the way the Iowa Finance Authority approves the low-income housing tax credit applications, and the way that we've already said what we're going to do, that would be considered a material change, because we'd have to build the first floor with 14-feet ceilings, and all of the units in the property, well, I think they'd pull the credits.
Yes.
I really do. So I hope you can... So, I hope you can support this.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mary Ann? Thanks.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, are you folks inclined to support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do you have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Did you move?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion by Saleh, seconded by Thomas. Discussion?
I really like this project and I just would like to thank Mary Ann Dennis and the people who are working on this. This is really great of some kind of affordable housing in this city, even though we need to do more. But this is really good step. And I think the amended of this zoning, of this like policy is good because we're going to have more, if we have retail store there, that means less space for more affordable housing, which is, I really support this and thank you.
I would thank you too, Mary Ann. I'm excited about this project. I think it's needed. Obviously, the affordable housing aspect, I think, is more needed than the retail space. So, I'm going to go along with this and be supportive.
Yeah, I'm supportive of well of the amendment. It seems necessary, especially in this case. I do have some just larger concerns about our supply of what I would call walkable neighborhood commercial districts. And I don't tend to view neighborhoods complete unless they have that, if it's possible. So, I just hope we, that's an issue that's sort of separate from this particular zoning matter, but it is a concern of mine of preserving and promoting neighborhood commercial walkable.
Yeah. And that was sort of what my question was directed at, too. I think affordable retail and high-quality retail space is a huge shortage in the community as well. But I really can't think of a better reason than to deviate from that than for purposes of affordable housing, especially where that'd be a deal, I mean, if that's not an obvious factor. So, we're really pleased to see it. Another thing I love about this is its location. It's a prime location, south-central Iowa City, beautiful view, close to the park. So, mega kudos. And mega kudos, I think, Hodge involved in this somehow. They did a terrific job on that, too. So, it's great to see one of our developers really getting behind affordable housing, especially in this area.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 0. Item 10B, rezoning between Burlington and Court Street, Pennecrest Garden Apartments. The staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Saleh. Discussion. I'd like to say on August 21st, we voted unanimously in favor of the motion as amended to include a short set of new conditional zoning conditions that had been agreed to by the developer. And staff has now requested expedited action. This is something I publicly indicated I would do if the amended CZA was approved. So, I am happy to support condensing the readings tonight. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Saleh?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 0.
Move final adoption at this time?
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Well, this is a major development. There's no question about that. And it's an important rezoning. There's a lot more work to be done having to do with height bonuses. And there's a process that we will go through concerning that. I don't have a timetable in mind for that. I don't know that anybody does yet. But we'll have to go through that process. And there are certain code requirements that apply, and we'll follow through on that. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to make a quick comment that with our community's efforts to reduce our carbon footprint, I would encourage the developer to find ways that would be environmentally friendly and sustainable, energy-efficient appliances, et cetera, to go along with that to help us reduce that carbon footprint rather than making a large development that only tends to increase that footprint. So, I would encourage that. I'm pleased to see that part of it is to better the streetscape of Burlington Street and Capitol Street. So, I applaud you for that, and I look forward to seeing that.
And also, I just want to mention that I really support this project and, you know, that there is, because of the affordable housing component to it, which will be, and even if you've been abroad for height bonus, which is, we are not going to talk about it right now. But I really want the developer to keep in mind, affordable housing in that area is not going to be affordable. Because it will be affordable to whom? And when we say we need affordable housing, we would like to help the low-income families who cannot afford to live somewhere else. And I don't think if we have affordable housing there, they will be, the low-income people will, you know, live on that building with students because this is just kind of student housing, more than like a family, you know, housing. Yes, that's really my thought. And also, 10 years affordable, it will go like this. And I really thinking about that. That's my own idea, is if you will be better on this. Yes, keep in mind that, think about it, and we'll talk more when you come and ask for height bonus.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 0. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Saleh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to Item 10C, rezoning east of South Gilbert and west of Sandusky Drive. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 18.03 acres of property located east of South Gilbert Street and west of Sandusky Drive from interim development multifamily residential, IDRM zone, to planned development overlay low-density single-family residential, OPD RS5 zone, and planned development overlay low-density multifamily residential, OPDRM12 zone. The applicant has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. I'm not going to support this. I think there's reasonable opposition to the proposed rezoning. And we need to ensure that people who have a view about the rezoning have an opportunity to express it, a full opportunity to express it.
I would agree. Typically, we don't collapse if there's much controversy or disagreement with the motion that we're going to take up. So, I would agree on not expediting it.
I also agree that we had received several comments about the Good Neighbor Meeting that was held and there was concern. It said they mailed to 23 addresses, but there were only about four families present at that Good Neighbor Policy. And I think we really need to consider their input. And I had some other concerns also. I think we need to look at it a little deeper.
I voted no last time because I really had a concern of the developer may not be in reach to all the, you know, the neighbors and have this good meeting. Even though maybe they did, but they didn't like really good, done a good job because there is many opposition. We have been receiving, like, letters, we've been receiving emails and people talk to us about this. And that's why I'm not going to support this. The expedited.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. As I say, you want to vote no on the motion if you do not want to have, if you do not want to expedite action.
Yes, I think I got that.
Roll call, please.
Thomas?
No.
Throgmorton?
No.
Cole?
No.
Mims?
No.
Saleh?
No.
Taylor? No.
Motion fails on a 0 to 6 vote.
Move second consideration.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Danielle?
Mayor, at your last meeting, you did have some questions about the landscape plan. So, I wanted to bring that forward to you tonight. I had to color-code this a little bit so it would be legible at the scale, but it should be showing with the trees with the darker outline, kind of the black circle around them as being the trees that are being replanted for the sensitive areas ordinance requirements. And then, there are some landscape trees along other areas that are more of a street tree and some landscaping trees. And then, a larger green swath that is the protected woodlands that are regulated by the sensitive areas ordinance as well. So, that is for your consideration. And I think there may have been also a question about distances. So, I did some quick measurements. I'm not sure that this is as legible at the scale. But there's a purple line that I've drawn in here from the edge of South Gilbert Street to about this point, which is where the closest corner of the multifamily housing would be to these properties here and some dimensions showing roughly 400 and 600 feet. And then, the extension of the purple line would be the farthest extent of the multifamily building as it relates to the existing single-family neighborhood on Sandusky and some measurements both to building edges and property edges. So, anywhere in the low 700 feet to closer to 900 feet distances from the multifamily property that would be located on Lot 1. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the landscape plan, if you like, or those measurements.
With regard to the landscape plan, Danielle, I'm thinking about comments that were made during the public comment period about how developers are required to plant trees under certain circumstances, and this would be an example. How do we track whether or not they have actually been planted and then whether or not the trees are surviving?
Tree planting would be something that would be checked as the certificate of occupancies were issued lot by lot. That would be something that the site plan reviewer would check to make sure that they are installed. Ongoing, and then the right-of-way trees and those parts of the development as those are installed and each lot is completed. The ongoing survival and maintenance of those is not something that we proactively patrol for. We certainly respond to any complaints that we might receive. If we can see something as we're kind of out and about in the community that's noticeable, we would follow up on that. But we would do enforcement as we do other enforcement, which is primarily complaint-based.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Danielle? Thank you. Would anybody else like to address this proposed rezoning? Sure.
Joel Klein, 2460 South Gilbert Street. I let you know my feelings about this development at the last meeting two weeks ago on the property, the historic property that's directly south of the development. I was curious about that tree planting plan. It shows like two trees between the southern edge of that building and the property line, which is 23 feet. Now, I'm not an arborist, but that actually seems to be a fairly small distance to be able to plant two trees that are expected to, you know, develop into mature trees. So, I'm not certain what the, sort of drawing circles like that doesn't necessarily mean that that's a feasible plan. Driving around Iowa City right now, I'd estimate there's 15, 16 multi-story buildings under various stages of construction. You've just approved a very large development over here. There's four rent signs all over town. It's difficult for me to see that there's a compelling neighborhood need for high-rise or multi-story, high-density construction that's significantly south of what we would, most of us would consider the downtown area. I believe firmly in urban planning. I think that having large, high densities of people within walking distance of stores and theaters and restaurants is outstanding. It makes us a more green neighborhood. It reduces our carbon footprint. Putting a high-density construction substantially south of town within, it's probably a half-mile walk to the nearest bus stop, doesn't necessarily seem to be in the interests of developing our community. So, again, I continue my personal concerns regarding the adjacentness of this large development right next to a National Historic Registry. But I would also urge that the City Council look into the interests of the city. And more development is not always the best thing in all places. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Anyone else?
Hi again. My name is Kelsey Patrick Free. I live at 652 Sandusky Drive, and I'm here again to oppose this rezoning project. I have a few items I want to address tonight. One of them is the 20% threshold. One of them is traffic. I want to talk about Iowa City's segregation, and I want to talk about the density issue. After the meeting last time, I went and asked about this 20% threshold that we had missed to get a change to how the vote has to work. I have with me tonight another petition that a neighbor asked me to bring, not knowing that that would not affect the vote. Another neighbor told me that she would bring one, which I think you probably have in your records. And the third neighbor, whose petition would have put us over the threshold at the last meeting, had both of them sign, both of the property owners signed it, changed his mind but then didn't do anything about it because he was told it would not make a difference to the vote level. His wife feels very disenfranchised because of this, because she feels that you did not count her vote without her husband's permission. I also want to point out that we would have hit that 20% threshold if you discount all of the city-owned property around the area. We know that this misses the letter of the law, but in the spirit of the law, I think you should change to not supporting this rezoning because of the high opposition in the affected neighborhood. A lot of neighbors are deeply concerned about traffic issue. The neighbor whose driveway faces Pepper already has a lot of trouble getting out of her driveway because of all the traffic, which is partially due to the house at the end of the street that is a group home. And she says that her husband can't even get out of the driveway at all because he has a neck injury and he can't turn his head to look for traffic. And as an aside, we have had no neighbors speak in favor of this rezoning at all. There's a high opposition in our neighborhood. So, at the last meeting, several people said that they liked the balance within the development, but that's not our problem here. The problem is the balance within southeastern Iowa City. I said before that Iowa City is economically segregated. We don't need more high-density housing in this part of the city. You're approving high-density housing in other parts of the city, which I think is great. I think we need to have a better balance throughout the city of affordable housing and higher-income housing. I don't want you to think of this as two buildings and 21 townhouses and 17 homes. This is 72 apartments, 21 townhomes, and 17 single-family homes. And this is not going to bring balance to southeast Iowa City or Iowa City overall. This density has real effects. You know, I talked about the effect on the school system last time, and I want to tell you some personal stories about how this has affected my family. I have a son who is in sixth grade pre-algebra. 26 kids in the entire Iowa City Community School District are in this class. 18 of those 26 children come from three schools, and that is what segregation looks like. My children go to Alexander Elementary School. that they don't have any transportation other than buses. They cannot get to their children in an emergency. They cannot afford a cab. It's up to two hours for them to get to a child in an emergency on a bus. There are reduced opportunities for these kids to participate in after-school activities. That is what segregation looks like. Now onto the density issue. Putting 36-unit apartment buildings in this zoning area is gaming the system. The zoning is supposed to be for fairly low-density housing. I believe it's under eight units per acre. This is going to be over nine units per acre. It's gaming the system to fit more housing into a tiny part of this rezoned area because a lot of it can't be developed. Now, as far as, we had people mention last time that they thought that adding these 17 houses would actually help with the economic segregation issue. I don't think that is correct. We're talking about a development that is going to be 85% rental units, and the average income of a household that is a rental household in Johnson County is $28,115. For a family that has children, they qualify for free and reduced lunch with two children at that income. So I know that not all of these houses or all of these units are going to be rented to people with children, but I think that overall you will find that the balance is not going to be going in the direction that it should be. So for all of these reasons, I urge you to vote against this ordinance.
Thank you, Kelsey. Anyone else?
Good evening again.
Good evening. My name's Don Cochran, and I'm the other south neighbor that Joel has, and so I won't add much more than what's been discussed. I guess I would like to go back to the tree outline that we showed, if that's possible.
Would you like that read?
If you can do it.
But I think there were a couple of questions asked, and, you know, again, I'll emphasize, I still believe as well that the one high-density building is just too close to the line based on really the historic nature and everything that exists there. I guess, having said that, I think there was a question, and I've talked to the builder as well, Joel and I have, and, you know, they are willing to put trees back, and, you know, I appreciate that. At the same time, there were trees there. There was a buffer there that I would have experienced in my lifetime that now I won't, and that's okay. I'm into trees. I plant trees that I won't ever probably get to experience. My concern is, though, that there's not a buffer there, and, you know, a tree, as we've talked about, depending on what type of tree it is, isn't going to create a buffer like was there before, because it was a woodland, there was bushes, et cetera. And so I don't want to be a stickler, but there is a green space here where you have trees running along, and then there is nothing. And that runs along my property, and I assure you there isn't anything there. And after the storm last week, there's even fewer things. There's only a couple little skinny trees that are popping up. And so I just ask that whatever buffer that you all approve, that be contiguous, you know, along that entire property, so that it doesn't in the end come back and say, "Well, there is this large space there that I think was just probably misrepresented based on what true trees were there." And I'm sure you could do a tree survey and determine whether there are trees there or not. But the final thing I think Joel brought up, if there is two trees there, you know, what is the circumference of those trees that mature? Are they going to be 20 feet? Are they going to be 30 feet? And so are we making a 60-foot buffer of trees, or is that just a design? Do you see what I'm saying? Because that is very important to us as we create a new buffer, and I just want to make sure that it's very clear to all of us, you know, from the beginning, what we mean relative to a buffer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Good evening again.
Hello again. Alex Carrillo, project coordinator for the developer. I just wanted to make a couple comments and responses. I think there's been some talk about the Good Neighbor Meeting by Pauline and Mazaher. I just want to clarify, we had every intention of inviting everyone to that, had no intention of excluding anyone for that. I didn't know, we didn't know anyone surrounding our property, so we, actually, I drove and popped in the mailboxes to all the Sandusky houses, and then mailed three to the, two in the south and one in the north, because I didn't know where those mailboxes were. So we gave our best intention of inviting everyone, and I think there was 10 or 12 people, and it was relatively positive feedback we had, so there wasn't intention of upsetting any neighbors. And then I guess as far as the landscaping, I think that was another comment. We have every intention of planting whatever the city's forester recommends. We met with Don and Joel, and we'd be happy to plant more trees if the city would recommend that, or if the forester would deem that there's an appropriate spot for it. So I guess we'd like to be flexible with that, and I guess at this point I'd like to answer any questions or concerns or comments that you'd have from yourselves or from what you've heard from any neighbors, if there's anything you'd have to ask.
Any questions for Alex?
I really am not against building itself, you know, multifamily residential is needed in this city, you know. But my experience as a community organizer in this city, a real need, you know, I want to see that the developer and the resident come together in one tables and try to come to common ground. I swear, if you sit down together, you will find some common ground, and so you can be, you will be satisfied, and they will be satisfied, and it still just way come move forward. That's my only concern, because, you know, I don't want like you bringing some like new resident who are going to leave the house, and they will be the neighbor of those residents. And there is no, like, reason for them just to start from now, think anyone will come, they are not. They will do something wrong for them, or that's why I just feel like we need that connection. We need to bring, you know, the developer and the residents to come to a common ground.
That's fair. I'd say the first concerns that we heard was at our planning and zoning, that first meeting, when that was the first concerns we had heard, and we deferred and took time after that to try and adjust the plan, add more trees in the easements, adjust the circle. There were some townhomes there, so. But, yeah, I think there's ultimately some differences that I think still exist, and...
I guess you still can do that, you know?
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, we still have time, and you still can do that, and you guys can come to, like, really a common ground.
Sure.
And we'll be happy to vote yes for that time.
Thanks, Alex. Anyone else? Yeah, let's not do that. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, could council discuss this? Anything anybody want to say?
I just have one question, maybe for Jeff. I've heard the concerns relating to socioeconomic segregation. The multifamilies are all market rate, correct? There are no income-restricted units?
Correct.
Okay. So I think along those lines is that, you know, we've all talked about affordable housing being a huge need in the community, but we've also talked about socioeconomic and regional balance for that housing, and this is a particular area of town that does have a lot of affordable housing, and I don't know that that's a deficit as much in that part. I think in other parts of the community it really is. And so for this particular project, when you have extended amount of market-rate housing that I think is a very high-quality structure, you know, I think it's going to be a real asset to the neighborhood, is sort of my view, and so I'm going to be, I'm going to be a supporter of this. We are getting, I think, was it 17, $300-plus-thousand homes, some nice townhomes, and I, maybe it's because I have a lot of friends that have lived in some of these multifamilies and a lot of good memories there, so I'm going to be supportive of this project. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Anyone else?
Well, when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, I, you know, expressed concerns with primarily the question, and maybe this time I'll try to reframe it a little bit, what I would refer to now as the need for what I've been calling the social infrastructure that's required if we're truly, if our goal in development of residential areas is creating neighborhoods. The creation of a neighborhood requires a certain level of social infrastructure in order to realize that goal. And social infrastructure to some degree is almost baked into our single-family residential development. You know, residents have their own access to usable open space. You have sidewalks passing by the residences that exist all around you, so it's not too difficult. You can always achieve perhaps a higher level of social infrastructure if you incorporate front porches and things of that sort, but the issue I have with this project is the lack of that social infrastructure where the multifamily development occurs. By the time you build the structures and provide the parking, some of which is not below the structure, there isn't that kind of, there aren't those opportunities in which to engage with your neighbors, and I think that's what's, in my view, is critical as all the other aspects of development. So that's what I believe we, you know, moving forward, when we talk about creating, which in my mind is the sense of belonging, which is involved with neighborhood design, that you kind of put down roots in a place where you belong to it. And if those opportunities for creating that sense of belonging and relating to your neighbors isn't there, the chances of that sense of feeling connected to your place won't be as likely. So again, that's my primary concern with the project.
I'd like to make one response to something Kelsey indicated. I think it was you anyhow, Kelsey, but it, I'll speak more generally because it's something I've heard from many other people in the city for the past many months anyhow. A lot of people drive through the city or look around, they see lots of new multifamily structures being built, and they say, "Why is this being done? You know, do we really need this much?" And in fact, there is a certain degree of overbuilding that's taking place. I think we have information that indicates that vacancy rates have been increasing, and hopefully that puts down, will put downward pressure on rents for a while. But it's also a fact that within the past, I think, eight years, the population of our city has increased by about 10%. These people need to live somewhere, and what we need to do is have decent housing available for them. And that's part of what developers do. I mean, you know, it's a market-driven situation, but they provide housing, among other things, for people who want to live in the area. So I suspect you don't, you didn't know that fact, and there are many other people who don't know that fact, but I want to make it part of the public record because it matters to decisions that we have to make. Any further discussion? I do want to ask Sue a question. I should have done this earlier on. There have been some references to, you know, petition to require a supermajority vote, and that requires 20%, people who own more than 20% of the property immediately adjacent or within 200 feet of the development have to oppose in order to invoke the supermajority requirement. And I know that some people who live nearby came mighty close to that requirement, but can you please explain the situation as it is now, if you're able to do that, and tell us what the law requires us to do?
Sure. The very situation that the resident spoke about did happen, where you had a husband and wife on the deed, and the protest was only signed by one spouse. And it's the city attorney's position that it has to be both owners. If you convey property, both owners have to sign the deed. If you want to get a mortgage, both owners have to sign the mortgage. The same with the protests. In order the protest to be valid, all the owners have to agree to protest. That's the way we've done it.
So we can't just kind of arbitrarily change the rules on the fly?
That's the opinion of what an owner means. It means all the ownership interests have to agree.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I really just don't understand, since I'm new council member. I guess really, you're saying because we closed the public hearing, we are not going to get to that threshold, even if they get to that threshold, it's not going to help?
No, no, no. It has nothing to do with closing the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, it has to do with a requirement that we, I think of as the supermajority requirement, and that is if people who own 20% or more of property that's located within 200 feet of the proposed development, if they oppose the development, then that invokes a supermajority requirement, which means it doesn't, it takes more than just a majority of council to approve it. It takes a supermajority, like six out of seven have to support, or seven out of seven have, a minimum of six out of seven have to support in order to overcome the opposition expressed in a petition.
Sure. That means it's still to be a supermajority. If they can bring that, like, whatever percent you said, we still can, you know, before the third vote, it still have to be supermajority.
It has to be by the close of the public.
Right, yeah, that's state law. State law requires the protest to be filed before the close of the public hearing.
That's what I was asking in the beginning. Yeah. Then why do we have three vote? I thought we do three vote because we want more input from the public to come. If we close the public hearing on the first vote, and there is new something come up, or at that time maybe the people didn't hear about it, and now they start hearing about it, and we have more people, like, opposing this, we're not going to take that on consideration somehow because that's how it is, or, really?
People can change their votes. You just can't require a supermajority to defeat it, but three votes will defeat it. But with the supermajority, you need five.
Yeah, just for the people, maybe if they vote the first time, and after that more input will give the council time, and then more information can your mind get you. Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I guess I still want to encourage the developer to sit down with the residents, and I encourage the resident, if you have more people opposing, to just bring them here, so you can convince the council members. And hopefully, it go the other way, you guys come to common ground, and next time we're going to have, like, four.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes?
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Thomas?
No. That's a 3-3 vote, isn't it? All right, so the motion fails.
Motion fails.
Okay.
All right. Fine, I mean, the motion failed. So could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please? So moved.
Second. So to make clear, there is no third vote.
Right, there's no third vote.
Yeah, I want to ask a follow-up question about this in a second. Could, let's see, we need a voice vote. Could all in favor say aye? Aye. This is about the motion to accept correspondence. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so I'm aware of occasional circumstances when people who, the council members can change their votes if they feel it's necessary. In other words, there can be a motion to reconsider. I don't remember the exact process. I don't remember the exact requirements, but like it's, I don't know, the council members who made the motion and seconded have to do that again or something. Can you help me out? I don't know if anybody wants to reconsider, but if they do, I want to know what the process is.
I can only help you out a little bit, but we'll get your definitive answer. It's usually that when you have a...
It's usually that when you have a motion that's carried, say, five to two, and then someone wants to reverse it, then somebody voting in the affirmative could do that the next time. I don't know off the top of my head what happens with a 3-3 vote. But we will get you that information. Just so the counselors know.
Okay, so, yeah, all right. I'd like to have some, I'd like to have an answer to that question. Okay. Moving ahead. Item 11, University City, 109 North Dodge. This is a resolution authorizing conveyance of a single-family home located at 109 North Dodge Street. I'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to address this topic? All right. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. I love the photographs that appear in our packet showing changes that have occurred within this particular building. I think it's another instance of the University City program having a significant and beneficial effect.
I just want to ask if you could remind me, from where we get the money that we do the rehab from, like which?
General fund.
General fund. And is this like budgeted?
Yes.
Beginning of the year? Okay.
Budget $60,000 per home for rehab. I think this year we have budgeted three homes. So $180,000 would be the budget impact.
Yeah, I understand. You know, I finally actually understand University City, like something is not like affordable housing. I don't know why I was thinking that we are doing this so we can like have like some kind of affordability for the people to buy those kind of houses. But finally, I found out this is not. This is really just you guys saying it's a part of the neighborhood stabilization. And yeah, I understand that, but still, I really don't know, because maybe of the, you know, I wasn't here when you guys bought that. But just reading through it and trying to understand, you know, we're using this money to rehab like a house so somebody can come and buy it. And we are not giving to the people who really low income so we can like help in affordable housing. We sell it to a person who can't afford to buy anywhere, just because it would like, yeah, to do a neighborhood stabilization.
But there are some income limits, aren't there?
We do have income limits. I don't call them off the top of my head.
It's 80% what, I guess you told me that before.
Sue, thanks.
Yeah.
The program requires you to be under 140% of median income. And if you have other funding sources, we restrict it further.
So it's not affordable?
No.
It's not, yeah.
The program was not meant to be as affordable housing program.
I understand what you're saying. That's great, but I just want to point out clearly, we are helping the people that really don't need help through this program. It's a great program, but to tell you the truth, in the beginning, I thought this is like really like kind of affordable, there is kind of affordability to it. But from the way that I see the prices time, I say, oh, this is really high price, it's not affordable for a lot of people. But like just going through, like Susan mentioned, the city is not like affordable last time. That's making, encouraged me to go and read it, and that's what I find out. Yes, keep in mind, we're helping, the city is helping people who don't need help. At the same time, they are not doing anything for affordable housing except using and depending on developer. Just like upside-down picture for me. Thank you.
The purpose of the University City program is to help stabilize neighborhoods that are located close to the university. And that exists for a particular reason. There's been so much pressure on those neighborhoods from off-campus demand for student housing, that landlords have been converting housing from owner-occupied housing to rental-occupied housing, so much of it. And that's undermined the neighborhoods that are located within a reasonable distance of the downtown. So this is roughly six years ago now, I think, Susan, we started this University City program. It was done in collaboration with the university, and the idea was to help enable people who worked at the university be able to, meaning staff mainly, who worked at the university be able to find housing within reasonable distance of the university. Then they backed out of it for one reason or another. But we've kept it going because it's had a huge effect on stabilizing and improving neighborhoods within Iowa City, like the Miller Orchard neighborhood, which is definitely not an upper-income kind of neighborhood. It's occupied by basically working-class folks primarily and some lower-income people. But it's really improved the quality of that neighborhood. You can ask anybody who lives in that neighborhood, and they'll tell you exactly the same thing. So, I mean, people can disagree about this, so I understand, but I certainly will support this.
Yeah, no, I didn't say I'm not supporting it. Don't get me wrong. And that's very good, but I'm just want to like really make something obvious for you. You are doing something here to this high, and you are doing something there to this low. And yes, if we can do like everything, like rising at the same time, never come and complain they need like to stabilize the neighborhood, and you start like thinking strategically what you can do, and you come up with this plan, and you know, you're doing it for years now, city money and taxpayer money being spending for these kind of things. But when we come to something else, you guys are not doing something like the same way. I guess I'm support of this. I'm not against this, no one got me wrong, but I would like to see we doing something, everything equally, so we can move this city together forward, not too much here, not too much there.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Item number 12, Resolution to amend the fiscal year 2019 operating budget. This is a resolution amending the current budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. I'll open the public hearing. Hey, how you doing tonight?
So this is the first budget amendment for--
Please state your name.
Jacqueline Feigl, Budget and Compliance Officer. So this is the first budget amendment for fiscal year 19. It's made up of three various categories. First, large, well, large line dollar value is carryforward request from FY18 budget. These are submitted each year by departments and then reviewed by the city manager's office and the finance department. And they have to follow along with budget policy for carryforwards, minimum of 5,000 or 1% of the division budget. Another large category is a capital improvement project carryforwards. A lot of the projects align more with calendar year versus the fiscal year, and other projects span over multi-years. The other category being just other small amendment amounts that have come up as we've gone through the fiscal year so far. Then from a big-picture point of view, the large categories for revenue that increased with this are intergovernmental revenues, large part of that being the state and federal grants for CIP projects, as well as home and CDBG carryforwards. The next largest category under revenues was other financing sources. This is with the university home sales and then sale of land. And the last largest was transfers in with various CIP and affordable housing increase. Then the other side, expenditures, the largest portion being governmental capital projects. There's a lot of major CIP projects that are carryforward. Then business-type enterprise funds carried forward about 12.7 million with mostly the major CIP projects within those funds. The last category being community and economic development, mostly carryforwards for CDBG home and University Program. Overall, the net change in fund balance decreased 26.3 million. And then, in the council packet is attached the complete list detailed with all the events.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Any questions for Jacqueline? Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to address this topic? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Cole. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Item 13, Hickory Hill Park Improvements. This is a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of agreement, and estimate of cost for the construction of the Hickory Hill Park Improvements Project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Hi, Julie.
Hi, Julie Seidel Johnson, Parks and Rec Director. Happy to finally talk to you about this project being out for bid. It's been a long time coming. To remind you, we had the master plan, which was finished shortly after I got here in 2016. A lot of public meetings about this that talked about the trails, talked about the priorities in the park, and everything in this project is based on those priorities. The project includes trail improvements, maintaining the crushed gravel or the trust, sorry, crushed rock that's out there, but improvements to make them more stable and deal with some of the erosion areas, especially on the eastern part of the loop trail over there. And then in rerouting one of the trails kind of in the northwest section to get it up out of the ravine a little bit higher. Two bridges are replaced, another one is repaired as part of the project. So these are all things that are really maintenance items throughout the park, things that we've been needing to get to for quite a while, but are included in the project. Includes a full signage package throughout the park, but that's really not that grand. When we did the master plan, if you remember, we kind of heard both sides of the argument of we need more signs out there, and then I really like to get lost in the park, let me get lost. So we've kind of come to a middle ground here. So we'll have the entrance signs, we'll have a few kiosk signs with maps, but then you can see the smaller kind of blade signs throughout to give you an idea when you're out, or if you're calling police to say, I can't find my way out. Get by a sign, and we'll at least have some locations to help us with that. So that's in the signage package. This is one of kind of three things we're working on out at Hickory Hill Park, so I just want to show you this map. We, the area, the yellow striped kind of in the center there is the area that mostly the Friends group has really helped us with to restore the forest area there. The pink hatches that go horizontal is the REAP grant that we received last year. That will also be going out to bid for a couple different packages to do prairie restoration and some reforestation efforts and stream bank restoration. And then the green areas, we just recently applied for a second REAP grant, and we'll hear back at the end of October. So we're just kind of growing the areas that have had the restoration efforts in addition to the trails, bridges, and sign projects. So just a lot of things to really improve the experience within that park. Friends of Hickory Hill have been a great partner in this. They've looked through all of these plans and have given their support as well.
Okay, any questions for Julie? Thank you. Would anybody else like to address this topic? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution?
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
Well, I hope the bids come in well. But I am very pleased to see the project move forward, and also I'm glad you included, Julie, those other grant programs that will also be part of the larger scope of improvements to the park. And, you know, it is, that's an interesting place in terms of orientation and signage. You know, you both, you do kind of like feeling lost, but sometimes there comes a point where you're half a mile away from where you thought you were, and it's, it can be a little troubling. So I think, I think we've struck a pretty good balance.
Anyone else? I want to say a word about getting lost. I first started wandering through Hickory Hill Park about 27 years ago, and I eventually kind of wandered on every trail in that park, and I really loved getting lost. It was a very special thing for me. And so I'm really glad you're not putting up signs everywhere, you know, directing everybody exactly where to turn and that kind of stuff. It's a really special feeling to be able to get lost in a city park. So, any further discussion? Ah, yikes. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 14, Rental Permit Cap Amendment. This is an ordinance amending Title 17 entitled Building and Housing, Section 5 entitled Housing Code, to require properties with new rental permits to be leased promptly. This is second consideration.
Move second consideration.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 15, Massage Business Requirements. This is an ordinance amending Title 5 entitled Business and Licensed Regulations to add a new Chapter 3 entitled Massage Business Information Requirement. This is pass and adopt?
Move adoption?
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Would anybody like to address this topic? Hey, Jory, how are you?
I'll adjust for my height here. I'd like to, like to just provide some follow-up for you all as we proceed with the third reading. And I'd like to start by providing a little bit of, a little bit of background, a little bit more background for you. As was provided for you in the Polaris study, it gave some national statistics about trafficking and sex trafficking, the various types of trafficking that occur within the United States. But I'd like to give a little bit more detail as it pertains to Iowa and some of our observations in Iowa City specifically. And when I talk about trafficking, I want to talk about labor trafficking and sex trafficking because we believe that both types occur and exist, not only in Iowa but within Iowa City, and specifically within the illicit massage business that we're looking to address with this ordinance. I want to talk a little bit about the 2017 Iowa Attorney General's report and provide a few takeaways from that report, because that report was specific to human trafficking in Iowa. And there were some good things that, or some observations that we can take moving forward from that report. First of all, I want to make it very clear that the report details that trafficking, both sex and labor trafficking, exists in Iowa. And specifically, again, as I mentioned, within the illicit massage therapy business. This report, or this study by the Attorney General's Office, spoke to survivors of trafficking, law enforcement, in reviewing their cases that they dealt with, and also talked to stakeholders or provider, or service providers to come up with the report that I'm referencing. A few takeaways. It was very clear from the report that law enforcement has very few tools to deal with sex trafficking in particular in Iowa, and specific to illicit massage. Right now, the existing, as I've mentioned before, the existing tools that we have are related to the existing laws that are on the books in relation to prostitution and sex work, and really enforcement of that business. The other takeaway for, from this report was from the survivors, who really emphasized I think, I bring those two things up together because right now, our, our approach can't be victim-centered. Enforcement is not victim-centered, because we know that enforcement that takes place in illicit massage can only take place against the victims of trafficking, whether labor or sex trafficking, that, that are working within these businesses. We need other tools. We need tools that help us to take that victim-centered approach. Right now, we provide lots of education to our officers. That was another recommendation, recommendation to educate officers on how to identify victims. And we're, we're working to continue to do that, and we can always get better, but we're working to provide that education to the officers to identify so that we can provide services to survivors, to victims. The one thing that's lacking is that tool, that tool that allows us to have that face-to-face contact, that, that maybe one-time contact with victims that allow us to then refer them to service providers, advocacy groups within the community, to get them the help that they need. And we feel that if we're able to do that with just one, just one victim, then we're making an impact, because it is a very transient and a very underground business that this, that this trafficking occurs within. Locally, locally, we've, we've had opportunity from this process, and even prior to, to observe, to observe various massage businesses, illicit massage businesses within Iowa City. And we've taken the opportunity to go to the businesses, prior to even our open houses, and I'll talk about that in a second, but we've taken the opportunity to send officers, plainclothes officers into businesses to observe, and just to kind of back up what we're seeing on the federal and even the state levels in reference to the, the two reports that have been provided, the Polaris report and now the Iowa Attorney General's report that I referenced. Some of the observations in sending those plainclothes officers in are that there's sexual marketing that's occurring, that many of the businesses, and we believe there to be at least five or six businesses in Iowa City, but that many of those businesses are advertising on websites that offer sexual content and services. Many of the businesses are poorly lit, and that the officers are having a very hard time communicating with those, those people within. In many cases, when we sent officers in, their intent was to provide information, provide information on the complaints that we'd received, and I know members of council have received complaints from community members on some of these businesses, to provide information on, on the complaints that we've received in hopes that they'll stop, but also to provide education and opportunity for them to be a part of a solution. As, as you know, we had two open house meetings with LMTs, or with licensed massage therapists, and as a part of that, we, we sent invitations to all licensed massage therapists in Iowa City. We also took that opportunity to hand-deliver invitations to the, those who we believed to be practicing illicit massage in Iowa City, and we did that by sending plainclothes officers in, as I mentioned, in hopes that they would be a part of the process, part of the process, part of the solution to some of the issues that we were bringing forth, but we don't believe that we had any attend our open house meetings. The ordinance that we have in front of you, as I mentioned, is a victim-centered approach. We think that there's layers there that allow for the police department to be on the latter part of, of any enforcement that takes place, and in reality, we don't think that the police department will have much opportunity. We hope we won't have much opportunity for any enforcement, because we believe the police department will be able to offer solutions and education instead of enforcement. The layers that exist, first of all, the, the enforcement of any ordinance will come on a complaint basis. Much like the concerns that have been brought forth, again, several council members, the, the complaints that come forth will be dealt with first by code enforcement, by sending in code enforcement officers to, to ask for the information, again, just ask for it, to verify their state license is already in place. It's not our intent to keep that information in-house, and it's just to, again, to verify that, that license exists. That's the first step, and again, it's complaint-based. When that occurs, if they're not able to provide that information, we believe it will take the opportunity to educate on how to get, to get compliant, to become compliant with the ordinance, to provide information, and even at that time, maybe even provide information on how those businesses or the business owners can, 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 can move forward and become compliant. If, if the person is not able to become compliant with code enforcement, then the next step would be a placarding, as is in front of you in the ordinance, and that's basically just a freeze, a freeze of the practice that's occurring, because right now, these businesses are operating their illicit practices, and we think instead of enforcing against the individuals, we have a useful tool in stopping just the business practice and stopping the building, the brick-and-mortar structure from operating. If code, code enforcement believes that something illicit is going on within that business, at that point, law enforcement may be brought in, and we would then in turn reach out to our advocacy partners for assistance. Now, I'd like to give a little bit of a summary of our, I guess, in wrapping up, my homework, my homework from the last meeting, which was to, to reach out to various advocacy groups within, within the city. I'm pleased to, to say that we've done that, that we, we did make contact with RVAP, with Monsoon, and with NISA, and we had a very productive meeting this morning here in City Hall. It was the outcome of that meeting, I guess the decision of that meeting, that we would all move forward, side by side, not the police department ahead of anybody else, but side by side, to, to work towards the best solutions for victims, to keep open lines of communication on what is and is not working with this ordinance, and to adjust it as needed. We already have these working, great working relationships with these advocacy groups, and we think that through this ordinance and, and through other work, we can continue that great working relationship. Any questions?
Aren't unlicensed massage businesses already legal under state law? I mean, so why don't you, or are they not?
No, the state just licenses the individual. There's no business license at the state level. That's the distinction between the state and the city.
Okay. So you don't have any state regulatory tools for purposes of regulating that?
Correct.
And then in terms of hours, are they operating in locations where you can't regulate hours of the business? Is that correct?
We, we, again, we don't have enforcement against, or ability against the business.
At least at this time.
Or even, or even the individuals at this time. You know, that's a great thing that, and I'm glad you brought that up, it's a great thing that the, the state legislator has allowed us to do. It's allowed us to customize a tool to our community, a tool that law enforcement hasn't had in the past. And I say law enforcement, really, this is a group effort, and we're, again, at the latter part of this, but it's a tool that we haven't had and that many municipalities are doing much differently than we are. This, this, instead of even providing us the ability to enforce that state licensing procedure, this gives us a tool to customize it and to, most importantly, use our discretion with our very educated officers on how to best serve our community.
And if I may add, just about the hours, that was one thing that Jan Ream and Jory and I spoke to the open house attendees, licensed massage therapists, because we thought that would be an obvious one, just have your ordinance say, for example, you can't operate between 2:00 and 5:00. And they said, oh, no, because we get a call from the surgeon who just got off performing surgery at 3:00, and they want a massage. And so they said, no, please do not regulate the hours, and the ordinance has nothing about hours for that reason.
Yeah. I do have to thank the, the licensed massage therapist that took part, and we had about 30 licensed massage therapists that took part in our two open house sessions. Again, we offered invites to everybody operating under, under the, the massage, that title within the city. About 30 took place, or took part in those very open discussions, and we had overwhelming support for what we had brought to the table, because, as I mentioned, it's, it's customized. It's, it's customized for Iowa City, and we think we can do it different, and we can do it, we can do it a little bit better. We can serve our community, and we can serve victims, survivors, a little bit better here in Iowa City.
Super quick, the victim advocacy groups do support this ordinance, is that correct?
Yeah, we had, we had a meeting to move forward this morning, yeah, and we're, we're moving forward with it together, and with those open lines of communication, yeah.
On that point, Jory, I was really happy to hear that you had met with RVAP, Monsoon, and what was the thorough?
NISA.
Sorry, Lisa?
NISA. And I think we have representatives, representatives here tonight from RVAP.
Yeah, I'm really glad that you had that meeting this morning. Any other questions for Jory? We might ask you to come back up in a few minutes, I don't know. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else want to address this topic?
My name is Lata DiMello, and I am an advocate.
Speaking of the mic.
My name is Lata DiMello. I'm an advocate at Monsoon and one of the assistant directors. We have offices in Des Moines and in Iowa City. We serve victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking in the Asian Pacific Islander communities in Iowa. I think I really appreciate the earnestness of the police force here, of law enforcement to, on this ordinance. However, today was just the first meeting, so we, while we support an end to all kinds of trafficking, including labor, including at meatpacking plants, including at dairy farms across Iowa, you know, it's not just the few massage parlors or establishments that exist, most of whom, if they are unlicensed, are from the Asian community. We have, as, our experience has shown, it has, there have been Asians who have also no documentation. That would involve other issues of how, how we would address this if ICE were to come in. And I think we haven't really thought this through yet, the whole ordinance. I, I do have to say, we did appreciate the effort, but you know, at this point, when we come in today, especially this morning, some other concerns have arisen since then, since that meeting, including what, what sex work means, really. What does it mean in a town where there are the means of sex as a commodity, and it has been commodified in every area, and it has been over here or since time immemorial about? So how, how would this be different? How would this ordinance really change the dynamic of how we view sex as a commodity? How we view sex workers who are not child sex workers? You know, these are adult consensual sex, in a sense. It's a, it's a commodity like a lot of other sex work. So those are questions that are arising. So we are not against an end to any kind of gender-based violence. I mean, that's what we are here for, all gender-based violence, and we look at gender-based violence internationally, globally. What does that mean as far as how we, how gender roles play out, how even we treat our, you know, girl child, boy child, how we see trans folks, how do we, you know, what do we feel about how people are treated because of their sexual desires, orientation, and the legalities that are involved? So there have been so many things that have arisen today, it would be, you know, it's really incumbent on us to look at this again. I, I, again, I support the, or Monsoon does, as does in RVAP. I'm speaking for RVAP and for NISA, that's not around, but sister organizations who do support an end to all gender-based violence. So our approaches have to be really well thought out, especially when it involves people of, of color, people who are marginalized, and who would be further marginalized, you know, based on certain laws and regulations that we pass. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
My name is Catherine Duarte. I'm the Assistant Director for Sexual Assault Services for RVAP here in Iowa City. RVAP supports the spirit of this ordinance, meaning that we want all forms of trafficking to end. At the same time, there is some concerns of unintended consequences and impact of what this ordinance can have in already vulnerable groups of people in our community. In my experience, effective policy is the one that includes most perspectives, and our involvement in this process feels a little bit rushed. Yet, at the same time, I, I'm glad that we were brought in so we can go ahead and work together, because we value our partnership with law enforcement, and that's why I said that the, we're together in the same spirit. We want the same end goal of ending trafficking in our community. I think we might need to slow down and see what we're missing, so our outcome and impact can match the intent of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no one else, let's see, no. I didn't check this box. Have we already made a motion to pass and adopt?
Yes.
Thank you. Council, discussion?
You know, I came into this meeting probably fairly certain that I was going to support the ordinance change, and then if there were any problems with it, and that may be viable option, which would be to pass it, and then carefully monitor how it's implemented, and then tweak it if necessary, and that, I think, remains a totally viable and reasonable option. I can certainly see how we may proceed on that line. But I'm, I'm wondering, can we, at this stage, can we defer for four to six weeks, or will we have to, for purposes of modifying it, or we'd have to deny it and then sort of start over again? How would that work if there were? In other words, we're hearing feedback that they would like more participation. How would that work in terms of changing the ordinance?
If you want to modify the ordinance, you'll have to start from the beginning. You'll have to have a first reading.
Okay. Well, I guess that's what I would like to do, so I am going to be a no at this point, because I think that we can, I think the stated purpose of this ordinance is to protect victims. That's something that I know law enforcement shares, that's something I know that our victim advocacy groups shares, but I think, given that that's the stated purpose, and it's no problem, I think the law enforcement community did a wonderful job, but I think that they should have been brought in at an earlier stage. I remain supportive of something to make sure that we can have safe commercial spaces that don't involve victimization. That's absolutely something, but at least from my point of view, I think we should vote no. Bring in these community partners who have long history of domestic violence and sexual abuse advocacy, and make sure that we get it right the first time, as opposed to waiting for, you know, how it would sort of progress into the future. So that's at least sort of where I am at this point.
You know, I guess I want to express some puzzlement and ask a question, and maybe I should have done this while people were speaking, but I would invite people to try to answer the question for me, and I'll just plead ignorant. So I do not understand how the proposed ordinance will make condition, make So, I do not understand how the proposed ordinance will make conditions worse for both consensual sex workers and victims of trafficking. I do not understand how it will make things worse. How can it not make things better? And maybe it's not sufficient, maybe it's not adequate by itself, you know? But how would it make things worse? Help me understand, please.
So I think one of the things with making it worse would involve, like, how would you make it better? Right? So, we don't know how it would make it better. We have had the experience, it's not been unusual for law enforcement or federal agents to contact us at Monsoon to work with victims from, when there have been arrests or involvement of cases where victims have been called in also. And none of it has been helpful because what victims really want is to disappear. They don't want law enforcement involved. And we make it a point not to have them believe that we are part of law enforcement. One of the things we offer them are all the services, as we do, are the victims of gender-based violence. What they want is a place to be safe and then to disappear. Go back probably to the traffickers because, so it hasn't been, so what I'm asking also is, in what way? We've tried and the Executive Director of Monsoon, in fact, does national work and works with an organization in New York where the victims, really, the sex workers come through. And even there, they have a real difficulty of providing them the resources when they think that they are able to be self-reliant. So there is penalizing them and then there is providing services that they want or saying, there is a demand for this, how are we addressing that as well? So I'm not sure how, I'm sorry I didn't answer your exact question, it doesn't harm them as in, you know, if you're offering services and as victim advocates. I'm not sure about law enforcement, right? But on the other hand, even after we offer them services, if they leave, it's not something, it's not like someone we've worked with who is a victim of domestic violence. It's not someone who we've worked with who has maybe a sexual assault case. This is, these are people who have been doing this work for a long time. And the other thing is, especially with the Asian community, it has been, I will tell you, most of the victims I have worked with are undocumented. And that's one of the reasons also, primary reasons, they do not want to be, you know, they want to be under the radar. So if we say we are providing you services and then knowing the current climate of ICE being involved in anything that's even, you know, remotely criminally linked, there's going to be other problems. So it's not helpful. I'm sure my RVAP co-advocate would explain more.
One way it can cause harm is what, we are assuming that those being trafficked are not seeking services or they're not receiving services in any way. And what we know from domestic violence is that people don't leave their abusers on the first try. There's several attempts. So with this ordinance, an unintended consequence might be that that group will leave in isolating more victims. And that victim who was connected with service, now it is in a place where there's no service, they're new. And that is one of the unintended consequences that we might foresee. There might be others. For example, who's making the complaints about these? What is it coming from? Is it coming from good faith or is it coming targeting a specific group of people? Because that also, we need to go ahead and take in consideration. We need to take in consideration, who's doing the education for the licensing? And who are we alienating from our community? And those are some things that I can think of right now. And that's why we want to have more time to go ahead and be able to work together, to be able to figure it out, how can we minimize that impact?
Thank you.
I had a question, Jim. I don't know if, maybe Jordi could answer this, or one of the ladies, Lata and Katrine, is it? If the business can't produce the documents required by this resolution and they're placarded, what will happen to those folks, those persons that were there, working?
Yeah. If the business can't provide their license number that's provided already by the state, if they're unable to provide or verify they're a licensed massage therapist, then there would be a placarding procedure, which is to stop the business from functioning and allow them the opportunity and even provide them the education on how to make that happen. Provide them the education on what they need and how to get a license through the state if need be. And we'd offer that in a number of different languages to make sure that we're inclusive in that education. And then if they're unable to get that, then the business would continue to not operate. The business structure would continue to not operate until they're able to get that. What would happen to the individuals? What we see is that these are large enterprises that are functioning many times out of larger cities. And it would be transient. It would move to another community, which is part of our fear that's going to happen here. I mean, municipalities around us are enacting these ordinances. And Cedar Rapids, as an example, had 18. Those businesses are also going to come here. And, you know, it's our belief that we have an option to, we can do nothing and we can allow this trafficking and this victimization to continue to occur. Or the only other tool that exists right now is that enforcement piece. And the enforcement piece is only usable against the victims and that's not something that we want to do. We want to help people. And we may only get one chance, one chance to have an interaction with that victim. And that's why we want our community partners to be on board and that's why we thought we were this morning as well. But we only get one chance. And then, as was mentioned, they may be shipped out, trafficked out of the area. So, you know, I guess we have a couple options. And for us, for the Police Department, doing nothing is not an option.
I still don't get your answer for her questions, what's going to happen to those individuals?
They'll be trafficked, they'll continue to be trafficked out of this area. And they'll continue to be sex and labor trafficked in other towns.
No, but by the Police Department, something going to happen to them?
They'll have a face-to-face contact with them and an opportunity to have our community partners come in and provide them services, advocacy services.
Even, okay, you provide some help to them, you mean?
Yes.
Further counsel discussion?
I'm going to support this. I wish there'd been discussion earlier between the Police Department and the advocates in the area. But I trust that that will continue to go on. I think this gives us a starting point. And I would hope that with continued discussion between the Police Department and the local advocates, that if you see from either side that there needs to be changes to this, that, you know, it'll come back to us through the Police Department and/or the advocates, hopefully together. I hope that you can build a good working relationship. I think everybody's on the same page, certainly in terms of the intent here. And so, rather than delay getting the start, I'm not hearing any convincing evidence that this is going to be harmful to people at this point in time. And so I'd rather get it on the books and get started. Have you continue those discussions? Get deeper into the weeds with each other in terms of how you can help each other and how it works best. And then if we need to make changes in the ordinance, come back to us with those changes.
Yeah, I feel this is a vexing problem. I'm a strong advocate of what I call deliberative dialogue. And like Susan said, I wish all the parties had perhaps started the conversation sooner. And I'm certainly, given the situation, feel it's very important that that conversation continues. At this point, I'm inclined to support it because I have a lot of confidence in the Police Department to continue that dialogue. And if there are any concerns that you continue to have and ways in which you can, we can, you can work together to improve the ordinance, that would certainly be, obviously, a good thing.
Pauline Mas, do either one of you want to say anything?
I think, as John said, it is a good first start. I am concerned, especially with my healthcare background on the health and safety of every member of the community. And I think it is a good first start, but do need to continue the dialogue, which should have been done even before this.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
No.
Memes?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one. Jody, I'm sure you and Jory will do everything you can to work with Monsoon, RVAP, NISA, et cetera, to ensure that we are working toward the same goal and doing it as effectively as we can.
That was what we decided today, we'll have quarterly meetings or, as necessary, more often. Sorry, there. Jody Matherly, Police Chief. Yeah, we decided today, quarterly meetings. And if there's a hot issue that we need to address right away, then we'll meet sooner than that. But keep the dialogue open. And for the record, Sergeant Bailey did reach out weeks ago for a couple individuals and didn't make any headway. I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, other than, the meeting wasn't just last minute this morning. We met with RVAP a week or two ago, made attempts for the other organizations. They're great organizations, some are used to working with us, some are not. There's autonomy, there's confidentiality, we respect that. And we make sure that they're able to do their jobs successfully and we can do ours. But we do work as a team, we know each other even better after today. There's faces behind the names and, you know, some of my staff works more with them than I do. But I assure you that conversations will continue. Worse concern than anybody, as anybody, about collateral damage. At the end of the day, keep in mind, our job is to rescue these victims, get them the assistance they need, and then also investigate and find out who's responsible behind this criminal activity, the ringleaders, and bring them to justice, not arrest those victims, it's key. This will help us. We appreciate your support in that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to actually speak to you on the phone, but we tried.
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to our next item. Item 16, animal services ordinance. This is an ordinance amending Title VIII entitled Police Regulations, Chapter III entitled General Animal Regulations, and Chapter IV entitled Animal Control to provide for animal services. And this is pass and adopt.
Move adoption.
Second.
Moved by Memes, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Anybody want to address this topic? Yeah, seeing no one. Just counsel discussion? Hearing no one, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 17, animal services fees. This is a resolution establishing fees for animal services and rescinding Resolution Number 97-233.
Move resolution.
Second.
Moved by Memes, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
I think it's important, some communication on this. I think when some people first look at this, it's going to look like some of our fees have jumped drastically. But when you look at how they are combining the fees, it's not as big a jump as people might think. And like with all of our fees, we try to keep up with them on a fairly regular basis. And this hadn't been done for a while, so I think this makes good sense.
I agree, but I really encourage the staff to, like, planning, like, smaller fee increase at frequent, you know, time in the future, so people cannot feel it. Like, we waited 20 years and we just, like, give them this increase, even though, yes, we did not increase it those years. But, you know, if my bill increases like $5, I'm not going to feel it, but $20, I will. Yes, plan to do that.
Point well taken.
Go ahead. I'd like to see then, in follow-up to that, like, if the adoption rates decrease because the fee has increased or a license, et cetera. Sure.
Brother Tim with the Police Department overseeing animal services right now because unfortunately Liz Ford has left us. A point about the adoption is, the fee actually doesn't necessarily increase because before it was kind of a piecemeal and included fixing the animals and such forth. And now everything's included. So now it's just a bulk sum, if that makes more sense. So, it didn't necessarily increase, it looks like it when you add it all together. But it was about like that anyway, before.
Thank you.
Does that sound correct to you, Sue?
So don't run away too quickly. Congratulations on your recent promotion to captain, well earned.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Memes?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 18, announcement of vacancies. Previous announcement, we have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term upon appointment to the Senior Center of Commission. Applications for that position must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September the 11th. We also have one vacancy to fill a four-year term on the Airport Commission, two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustments, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Community Police Review Board, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the East College Street area, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission for the Jefferson Street area, and two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Telecommunications Commission. Vacancies for these will remain open until filled. All right. Item 19, community comment. Gustav, please feel free.
Hi, Gustav Stewart, student liaison. I first off wanted to invite you all to the joint session this coming Tuesday in collaboration. It's with GPSG and UISG. And basically what that is, is a formal meeting with the Senate of GPSG and UISG to basically pass a few resolutions of what the big priorities are for the organizations. That, again, that's Tuesday, September 11th, and I'll send details of more information. And then please RSVP after I send that.
Yeah, please do send more details, okay?
Definitely. And then the second thing I wanted to talk about is basically the Board of Regents meeting that will take place in the Iowa Memorial, excuse me, Iowa Memorial Union the next day, where they'll go over different program proposals of the University of Iowa and things such as the university club and what they're going to do with that and various things like that. Yeah, thank you.
Good deal. Thanks, Gustav. Item 20, city council information. So we could start with John and move to the right. Oh, did I, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Oh, right, community, excuse me. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, please. My bad. I was wondering, my bad.
Yes, yeah, thanks. I realize that I may not understand the process for making a comment. I had come because I had intended to speak to 8A, but I guess there was no public comment on 8A, so might I make a comment now, or do I have to sign up?
I think you should feel free to.
Okay, great.
And let's be clear about what 8A is.
Deer management.
Yes. 8A is the issue of sharpshooting.
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Florence Boos. I live at 1427 East Davenport Street, and I am one of a group of persons who have combined to advocate for non-lethal deer management solutions, rather than sharpshooting. I want to make three points. I realize it's been a long night. First, it's cheaper. Secondly, in the long term, it works, whereas other methods do not. And thirdly, it is more humane. The last time the city had a sharpshooting program, they spent approximately a million dollars on killing deer. As even the white buffalo de Nicola person admits, this is not a permanent solution, and so here we are again. That's a lot of money. We've heard quite a bit about how people need cheaper housing and trees and so forth. So before one commits this, one should be sure that it accomplishes fewer deer. Long-term solutions do work. In the summer, I live in a place where, British Columbia, where the deer are never shot. They do eat something once in a while. People enjoy seeing them. I think it's false consciousness to think that it's absolutely intolerable to have a deer in your yard. There are several things the city could do. It had a commission before, which made a list of non-lethal solutions. It could send out a brochure every spring on plants that deer do not eat. It could post appropriate signs during the season when they do cross roads, something that I know doesn't now occur, because occasionally you see a deer sign or something, but it's not accompanied by deer, since the deer are there in only selected places and at selected times in the fall. And it'd be a lot cheaper to compensate all of the people who complain about deer entering their yards by helping them build fences, in which case there would never be any more deer, rather than shooting again and again. And as you can see, the people who have complained are joining a park, and they're a finite number of people. And in the third, it's more humane. Sharpshooting is a bloody thing, even though they pretend it's not. Many times they do not get their target, and it takes the deer hours to die. And people have witnessed this. Older deer need to train young ones in how to cross the street. It seems an exercise in stupidity to kill the more mature deer and let the young ones fend helplessly for themselves. We have a website that we've prepared, which discusses non-lethal solutions, points out some of the problems that have occurred in other places when they have attempted not to use them. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. We hope the city will reconsider, go ahead with something which is not only expensive and inhumane, but in the long term will not produce the results desired. Thank you.
Thank you, Florence. I apologize for almost not giving you a chance to speak. Would you like to address this, too? Same topic or something else?
Topic. I was waiting for agenda item 8A, but I think it
I'm sorry.
It was skipped at some point. My name's Allison Janes, and I was at the Deer Task Force Open Meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago, and then I understand there was a meeting where all of you had discussed the results of that task force open forum. Is that correct?
No, that has not taken place.
That has not taken place. Okay, great. So I just want to bring a couple of things to your attention before that conversation takes place. I would really urge you to do the research, look up the facts. A lot of what was presented during that open forum, if you go back and watch the video or listen to the audio, there was a lot of misinformation being propagated at that time, such as increase in deer-related vehicular accidents, which the Police Department has confirmed is untrue, but there was a quote of 60% of increase in vehicular accidents. And there was also concerns about Lyme disease, and I wanted to set that record straight, that deer do not contract Lyme disease and thus do not spread it to ticks that will then come into your yard and get onto your dogs and get onto your children. So there was a little bit of misinformation being supplied during that forum. And I just, I would like to urge you with caution to move forward, not to denigrate certain people or certain entities, but to look at communities that have gone with this option in the past, and maybe specifically with white buffalo, and some of the regrets that they've had from going down that route. And maybe to even conduct an independent survey of the number of deer in this area and who they're affecting, not from the person who would then get the contract to take care of those deer and manage those deer, but maybe from a different entity that would do a different type of survey, which has been proven to be more competent in terms of finding the number of deer that are in the area. And then finally, I just wanted to say that I hope we all agree that we would want to be one of those places that's a shining example of creating a creative solution to a problem such as this, rather than just going with the thing that's presented, you know, the easiest, and it might not be the most compassionate, it might not be the most enlightened thing to do, but to maybe look at some of these other creative solutions. There's communities around the country that have taken a lot of steps to manage and reduce their deer populations in other ways besides hiring hired guns to shoot them. So I would urge caution in the path forward, and if you haven't discussed this, then great, my comments are timely. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Lori Kendrick.
Can we?
I would just
Hold on for a second, please.
My name is Lori Kendrick, and I would just like the council to revisit, there again, some of the issues that were presented at the forum. I have had email communication with the DNR District Forester and have read studies that were written in 2003, where the undergrowth of the forest is not, at Hickory Hill Park, is not decimated by deer browsing, it's actually a human issue with human disturbances. So I'd like for all of you to reconsider and look a little deeper into that. I'm waiting to receive the updated 2017 inventory of the trees and the habitat of the Hickory Hill Park. And I agree, I just think that there were a lot of emotions at the forum, a lot of members just kind of bringing out their own feelings, but I would like more factual information on literal facts versus perceived risk of the Iowa City specifically, the deer herd here. Not in general, that deers cause X number of vehicle deer accidents or overbrowsing That's my take. I've emailed. Hopefully you'll check into it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much. Okay, Royce, Anne, you're not going to address this topic, are you? Okay. All right. So I apologize to all three of you for not giving you a chance earlier, and my bad. Where were we? We were, John, you were just
I mean, council information. I just wanted to briefly report back on that TEDx event, which I did go to, at least at Merge. And I'm assuming that since part of the reason for these events is to record it and then hope one of those presentations goes viral, as they say. I haven't seen them being posted yet, but I'd encourage you to look out for them. I thought many of them were interesting, and it was just kind of fun to be at the event and, you know, TEDx Iowa City. Although there have been TEDx events in the past, I also saw those on YouTube.
I think Mark Nolte pushed the envelope a little bit in a constructive way, I hope.
Yeah, it was fun.
Pauline?
Just a few things to comment on. Couple of weeks ago, attended the Riverside McDonald's grand reopening ceremony, which was really fun. They have kind of a facelift, so to speak. It's a very nice updated facade and the interior, and I think that's going to be great for the West Riverfront sub-district there, and the streetscape, a nice entryway into the Riverfront crossings area, at least to start anyway towards that. Then last Thursday was really busy. I'll throw in the report on the committees, in case we don't get to that later, was the ECICOG meeting in Washington, Iowa. Main topic that concerned most people, or that most people are interested in, was the Corridor Rides Express Bus Service, which Windstar Lanes has been selected to operate the service, and they still are predicting the launch date to be October 1st. And they selected a name, it's going to be called the 380 Express, so if you see that referred to, that's what that is. Also, that same day, attended the UAE Open House at East Dale Plaza, and I think we're very fortunate to have this resource for our children and our young families. If you haven't been out there, they're open to have anybody stop by and tour that facility there. Also, that same day, Project Green had their event at Ashton House. I saw, I remember I saw Jim there. Want to thank all of them for all the beautiful things that they've spread across the community. They do a great job at that. And then just yesterday, the Labor Day picnic at Lower City Park, and we were in the new shelter in Lower City Park.
Great shelter.
Julie's left, and it's beautiful, everybody commented. We had great use out of the old shelter that was there, which was fine, but it was kind of old and getting kind of rickety, and everybody commented on the beauty of this new shelter. It really is a nice, big, open area, and the colors are nice and tall, and very nice. That's all.
Yeah, I don't have anything. Yeah, same event. It was great.
Yeah. Rodney?
I have sort of two substantive matters. One, as I indicated in the information packet, I would like to do a follow-up and see whether there's council support for a follow-up work session to address issues associated with the Kinnock House. I don't think we've done enough in terms of follow-up since that work session we did in November of last year. I think we've done one thing, as far as I can tell, which was to adopt a conflict system. If there's a conflict on the Board of Adjustment that requires one of the members to withdraw. I had a very constructive conversation with a lot of members in the neighborhood. I think that they have a lot of continued feedback on that, that I think are very substantive, very well thought out. I don't think this is an emergency topic. I think this is something that, if we can get it on the next six months, I think that would be very important. And I think in particular, I would like to address where we are with our stormwater ordinance, our sensitive areas ordinance, because I think there's some major concerns that we still need to address arising from that project. In particular, there are gullies of extensive amount of water that are now creating these huge gullies right along the hillside there that the residents showed. Now, it could be a function of just not all the construction is done, but I want to make sure, and I think the residents want to make sure, that we have the confidence that we're up to date in the way that we should. So do we have support for that on the next six months to do a 20-minute work session?
Rodney, if you don't mind, could we discuss that during the work session, instead of doing it here at the end of the formal meeting?
Well, this is usually when we bring up requests for work session topics, is it not? I mean, we certainly could.
No, no, it's usually in the work session.
Okay, I'll defer on that. So there's another thing I wanted to bring up then on the work session.
Am I right about that? Maybe I don't want to mistake
I think they come up at different times throughout the evening. I would say typically, you know, the pending list is on your work session, it's an IP item, so typically work session, but whatever.
So it's an okay time, but I guess what I mean is, I want to discuss that further, and I'd rather end the formal meeting and then get into the work session.
Fair enough. A couple of events, then I'll just switch to a couple of events. In terms of upcoming events, there is a party in the park at North Market Square Park, September 16th from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. Sounds a lot of fun, it's garden, bees, food, and fun, one of my favorite parks, I think you'll probably be there. Should be a great event. There's a job fair at the Robert A. Lee Rec Center, September 11th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., so I encourage people to attend that. It should be a great event, a lot of opportunity for people. And then finally, one of my favorite organizations, Backyard Abundance, the community garden project in the Weatherby Park, will be taking place September 9th, 2018, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. So it should be a great opportunity for some community edible forest gardening with Backyard Abundance. So that's all I have for now.
Good deal. All right, I do have a few things to bring up. I think you know that last week, on the 22nd through the 24th of August, I participated in the Mayor's Innovation Project meeting up in Grand Rapids, Michigan. It was a terrific meeting, for all the reasons I articulated last year after going to the meeting in Burlington, Vermont. And one of the consequences is that I talked with the mayor of Grand Rapids, and then with a key staff person up there about the EAB and how they've been responding to it, and I was thrilled to see Zach Hall presenting that information, because they reached out to the mayor and the staff person and got all the detail about what they've been doing up there in Grand Rapids. So it's a really good connection. That project is a really good connection. While there, I got a phone call from a woman who was very frustrated and angry, so these are always great fun to receive, you know, but she was legitimately frustrated and angry about traffic congestion and delays on Mormon trek. Yeah, so I got a phone message, so I phoned her back, and then we had a good conversation about that, and I listened to her and then indicated what I understand we are doing out there, and tried to make sure she knew the facts at hand, like we're rebuilding the intersection and that kind of thing. And then she said, "Well, I want you to go out there and drive that road. As soon as you get back from Grand Rapids, drive it." So I did, on Monday, after I got back, and I found there was some congestion. I was out there around noon time, and I can tell you, it wasn't severe, and there wasn't any kind of big delay. There was, you know, a whole, two lanes on the, going north were all shut down, because that's where the work was being done. But it wasn't really all that difficult. I'm sure there are times when it is, but it wasn't then. I also participated in one of Dave Gould's green room classes at the Engler. When was it? I don't know, a few nights, several nights ago. I don't know if you know about it, but it's a really impressive effort to get students out, engaged with the community, and learning about things, and doing this big class, there are 90 students in the class, doing the class in the Engler. So Dave asked me to come and talk a little bit about what I think are kind of big topics facing us in Iowa City, and then they're going to be processing that over the next six weeks as part of that class and, or course, and, you know, moving ahead with that. I also attended the League of Women Voters Candidates Forum in this room on the 29th. It's pretty constructive, and hey, I voted today. I'll bet some of you did as well. And I'll bet somebody up here at the podium knows what the election results were.
Yes.
Yeah, so who were the
Rose and Ann.
Sorry.
Teague and Ann.
Fricks.
Fricks.
Interesting. Well, congratulations to them, and so they'll be in the October 2nd election. Let's see, a couple of other things. Some of us are going to be participating in a guided tour with our state legislators on the 6th of September. I'm looking forward to that. And I'm going to be participating in a ribbon cutting at Longfellow on the 9th. I'm certainly looking forward to that, you know. Yay! Yay, Longfellow, where two of my sons graduated. Yeah. All right, enough for me, that's all I wanted to say. Jeff?
Nothing.
Ashley?
I'll only say that I have some kind of exciting news. We put our final edits on the Climate Action Plan today, so you'll be seeing it soon.
Outstanding.
Great.
Very glad to hear that. Sue? Kelly? All right. I think All right, I think that means we're pretty much done. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please, and we're going to reconvene the work session after adjournment? So, moved. Moved by Thomas.
Saleet and secondly.
Secondly, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Formal meeting is done.